Please let's take our seats.
(laughing).
All right, welcome to this afternoon's work session. We're going to start off by asking if any commissioner has or would like to discuss any other items for next week's agenda.
I do.
All right.
Hold on, I can't see. Hold some lights, mister.
Yeah, we need to hit the light somewhere.
Uh, yes.
Try this side. This side.
Maybe it's just me.
No, it's not.
It's the public eyes.
Okay. Um. I've only been here sixteen years.
(laughing).
There you go.
That's it, I think that's it, but back there.
No, that's not. Can y'all see?
(laughing). Well, something's going on with the lighting. There you go. Contact.
Okay.
Thanks. All right, go ahead, Commissioner Hammer.
Yes, number nine, the budget amendment, repaying the general fund. Can somebody tell me what that's all about?
I was repair the general fund for funding correctional officers in the sheriff's office and the budget. Ms. Merritt, you know anything about that?
Number nine, Stacy. It's number nine.
It's a budget amendment.
Is that the one for the sheriff's department?
That's correct.
Yes, um, I'm actually going to get Chuck to pull that one. Based on our emails going back and forth this morning.
Number nine is?
Two dash nine.
Two dash nine, uh-huh.
She says she's going to pull it off the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Based on those emails going back and forth this morning, that money was historically moved from the construction fund to fund salaries for the jail, but after everything we were talking about this morning, I'm pulling it and we're going to use it towards that.
Oh, okay. Well, hold on, one, one, something else too. And I, I'm assuming number ten is, is in the budget, the two million for the health something?
Yes, ma'am. This was something that was discussed prior to me coming onboard and was allocated in other general government for the sheriff's department, and once we realized that's what it was for, we're actually turning it over to the sheriff's department.
Oh, okay.
So we're moving it from the sixty-five hundred to the sheriff's office actual account.
So, yes, it was a budgeted on.
It was a budget, okay.
It was budgeted, for some reason it just wasn't put into that, it was allocated for it, but it was not put into their account.
Oh, okay, because I was wondering, I know we just finished the budget for the fiscal year and...
We did. They had asked for additional, um, funding for the medical, and it was given, for some reason it was not actually given to them in their account.
But it is in their budget?
It's going to be after you pass this. It was allocated into the other general government and for them, so it's going to be put into their actual budget now. It was voted on.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out, is it coming from the general fund?
No.
So the money was budgeted initially, finance traditionally have had that, this is dealing with, I think, the medical contract.
Right.
Traditionally, that money was in other government accounts, other general accounts under finance. Sheriff's Office has asked that that money be managed through their budget, so all we're doing is moving that money from the other general government account to the sheriff's account, but the money was approved in the budget process by this board.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, so whose budget is it coming from?
It's, it's coming from just the general, it's coming from the general fund, it's coming from the FY twenty-three budget that was approved by this board.
Right.
But now it's being moved specifically to the sheriff's budget, opposed to just staying under finance who traditionally have managed that account.
Okay. Can I help a little bit perhaps? Not to interrupt, I think that what's confusing is the fact that you, we're confusing budget with where the funding was allocated. So, um, if I may lend, Madam Vice Chair, uh, there were some emails that went back and forth, and those emails, um, there was a question about these funds that were voted on within the budget, and it was some other funds, not just that one. And in that email, I specifically even stated at that time that, um, once the board votes, then that's the budget, but the problem was it was in a separate or a different account, which the reason I'm saying that, Madam Vice Chair and the rest of the board, which lends to the fact that, uh, we've got to get this audit complete, because I don't know if people have noticed, but Stacy Merritt, um, who's our interim CFO, has had to come behind and fix a lot of things from that budgetary process for years to come. I looked at the entire list and we were moving millions of dollars that I don't even understand how they were even ever sitting in a general fund when they're allocated in a certain way through the budgetary process. So the, the budget is the budget, and we need to start getting things added to the budget, and then we have to make sure that the funds are coming from the proper account. I, I can't wait till we get through with this audit, I just don't understand this flow of money from accounts that it shouldn't have never been in.
I guess Commissioner, to, to provide the answer to your question, the overall budget is not being increased.
No.
It's not being increased, it's just moving from one account to another account.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, you can stay up. Number twenty-two, uh, resolution twenty-two-two-dash-one-ninety, that emergency rental assistance?
Mm-hmm.
Is that something we're going to vote on for additional money? Is that money already there?
Yes, ma'am, that was the six and a half million dollars that we, that y'all asked for at the table, and I asked that we bring it back to the next board meeting just in case there was a time sensitivity associated with that amount of money. Uh, we still haven't gotten whether or not that'll be the case, but at the end of the day, if ultimately, um, this board feels that we need to continue to table until you get additional information, uh, we certainly can do that. But we put it back on this agenda for the mere fact that we didn't know whether or not it would be time sensitive or not, that if we didn't, um, provide a response, that we had the opportunity of losing that funds. So that's why we're doing it.
Is it time sensitive?
Yes.
Is it time sensitive?
It was still get, waiting for a response, so we haven't got that response yet. So we did, again, it's just a placeholder.
Okay.
If ultimately, it's not something that we need to move forward on, then clearly we'll ask the board, if you need more time to get additional information, we certainly will do that. And the resolu, I'm sorry, the resolution is just to accept the funds? That is correct. And that's just basically it, to make sure that we have the funds that's coming in, that's going to go towards helping the citizens? That is the context of the resolution.
I have a question, I'm glad you said that, Mr. Chair, because this says that the resolution is actually for, to apply, and first we have to apply for those funds and then accept it, so let me understand clearly, have, has it already been applied for? Or is it to apply and then subsequently accept if it is?
I believe this is part of that reallocation, so the language probably needs to be cleaned up, but I think it's a reallocation of funding. It's a reallocation of funding and we're asking the board to give us permission to accept that reallocated funding, similar to what we did with the DCA funds with the nine million.
Oh, wow, so we're not applying for it, it's just reallocation?
Yes, ma'am.
So that's incorrect. Okay, I just need to make a note, and when you say hearing back, who are you waiting to hear back from?
Um, I think that's the Department of Treasury.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other items? All right, let's tend to the agenda. First item up's mandatory solid waste collections presentation, Mr. Matarco.
Josh Lawson, our consultant with Jacobs, is going to lead the presentation for you all tonight, and this is a summary coming off of the individual meetings we had with each of you, with COO Stanford, and trying to get some consensus on some of the items to move forward.
Good afternoon, evening commissioners, thank you for having me here today. Uh, as Jeff said, this is just a follow-up update summary, um, from information we gathered meeting with all of you individually over the last month or so, uh, and really going to keep this short and sweet, just touching on items where we reached, you know, pretty good alignment, items that are kind of halfway there, and then items that still need, um, still need to be considerably invested in to get alignment on, and I'm going to start in the reverse order from what I just described, so, um, the program elements still require an alignment. Now, just as a reminder, this is around the construct of a program that was brought forth and recommended by the Solid Waste Authority Board, um, to advance, and we have been working through, um, bringing that before the individual board members. Some of the items that were identified that were not in alignment across the board, two primary items that really have a big impact, the first one was the mechanism for the fee collection. There was not a consensus across the board members as to how that should occur. Uh, in the various different one-on-one meetings, there was discussions about vendor invoice, vendor invoicing directly from haulers, county invoicing, water authority invoicing, tax bill, um, and then other ideas were also presented on that topic. And then there was also a lack of consistency between are we, would the fee collection be levied against the resident or the property owner knowing that there is a discrepancy in the, um, in the housing dynamics within the county. The other item that was not, um, not in alignment across the board was the enforcement process. As it was defined in the construct of the program out of the authority, that enforcement would be handled through the code enforcement department, uh, there were very indifferent, various different ideas as to how that would be brought, um, brought forth and used to implement the program. As for items where, uh, we largely have alignment across the board, uh, when it came to the topics of, you know, cart type at the curb and branding, there was general consensus with some nuances across the board, but for the most part, um, pretty much on the same page, same when it came to county involvement in, on the side of the customer service component, relative to offering a senior citizen discount and backdoor pickup provisions, as well as the length of hauler contracts, for the most part, the board was in general consensus as to, um, how they would like to see those elements incorporated. Where we had essentially full alignment, uh, all the commissioners were on the same pa, uh, same page, was the normalization of pricing via franchise fee across the various districts, um, applying some kind of controlling on pricing of the optional services, like, you know, yard debris and bulk on pickup and recycling, um, the option of not ha, not having an opt-out option, um, capping this to only impact residential structures up to a quadruplex and nothing more, staying away from apartments and the larger multi-town home communities, um, and then also, uh, having hauler supplied amnesty days incorporated as part of the contracts. So, there is definitely still room, or at least there's still space where alignment would be needed in order to advance a program and, you know, align with the structure, and this is part of just a vetting process, and I'm going to hand it over to the COO Dietrich to carry on.
Thank you, Josh. So, board, I guess really what we're staying is, um, the end goal is that what we're trying to do is to get to an RFP, a request for proposal, to get out on the street, and the reason why that's important is that in order for us to understand the fluctuation in the cost for these respective haulers, there has to be some very specific items that need to be addressed in order to do that. Um, for, for the public's sake, one of the things that we continue to emphasize is that this board has the opportunity to stop or start this process whenever you feel fit, but I think at the end of the day, what you're trying to do is to see what seems to be the going rate for these respective haulers, to see whether or not it could be an affordability issue, or is it, at a minimum, comparable to what they're paying right now in space, and if so, or if not, then are there other options that we can bring to the table to try to normalize that space? So, as Josh outlined, I think the, the key here is to ensure that certain questions are certainly answered, so we can put that in the RFP in order for Director Rogers to be able to put it out on the street for those haulers to respond, and we're really just ans, asking the board, what mechanism do you think is best for us to try to get those concrete, um, answers on the front end with regard to additional details in the RFP, so there ultimately, we can move forward with the writing of that scope of work. Question four. Okay, so, let me just say this, go ahead, uh, no, I was just going to say, is that something that you're going to individually get back with us on, or are you just looking for some direction right now? Um, we can do either one, we can do individually, or we can do it in a work session that digs a little deeper to provide you the context, or we can provide you options with the pros and cons, and then you can pick from that menu, from the pros and cons, and we can utilize that as the framework as well. Well, for me, I like the option of, uh, coming up with options and getting with us individually and maybe working through the weeds as to, as to what we would like to see, and then bring something back to us. Okay. As far as our responses. Duly noted.
No, I think we were asking.
No, I was just going to say, um, again, I would like for you to do that, but like I said, we've, when I, when you came to us the first time, I, I thought we had worked through most of the things that we needed to, so what you need to, what I would like for you all to do is give us some specifics of what you're looking for, where, where we're going with this, and how we're going to get this done, because at this point in time, I think it's time for us to move forward. Uh, we need to go on and try to get some mechanism in place, uh, again, the citizens have definitely been asking for this, and so we need to find out, you know, where we're going, because I thought when we met last time, that was going to be the catalyst that we moved on, so we could move forward and, and, um, get the trash service going for the county, so that's the main thing I want to focus on.
With all due respect, Commissioner Anderson, I, I think that they're looking for more direction, for more specifics from this board as to what we would like to see as we gather the information from our constituents to be able to provide to them.
Okay, well...
And a good example, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
And I respect, I, I got what you all were saying, so, so, you, you, you all are going to come back with some more questions with us, or just what our constituents want to see, you want to know from us, because I, I want to know specifically, what are you looking for now?
Got it. So what we'll do will be very specific about those areas that we know we need to address in order to develop the scope of work, and, and a good example of that is, is the fee structure. Are we going to have the tax commissioner collect the fees, are we going to have the, the hauler use a franchise fee, and they handle the collection on behalf of the county? Is the county looking to develop a third-party administrator in space to handle that? We need to be very specific in the RFP, because that will help drive the costs one way or another, and those were some of the questions that we asked that we, that we got a difference in, in responses.
Okay.
So, we'll be very specific through those areas that certainly need to lend its support to development of the RFP at a minimum.
Okay.
And provide clarity in that space, and we also go a step further to provide you the pros and cons to those respective areas.
Okay, because I, those were some of the questions that you asked, but you said you got different responses?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I was wondering, we'll go with that. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Yeah, just get, get back with us. Will do. All right, let's hear from Roman United, uh, update.
Um, the Roman United team was invited to come before the BOC to give y'all an update on the project, so we have Mr. Jock Roman, CEO, and Mr. Robert Zatner, who's with the Yamazaki A&amp;E firm, who's doing the work for them, so gentlemen.
Stank your name for us, sir.
Oh, my name's Larry Vincent, um, executive director of Development Authority Clayton County, thank you, Chairman.
Good evening, good evening, I'm Jock Roman, um, I am the lead developer on the project of, of Roman United, I also have Robert here of Yamazaki, who is the executive architect, um, for the project. We are looking to do great things in Clayton, as, as you guys know, and, uh, kind of want to do a, a video slash presentation of what we're going to, what we're going to be showing in the updates of the project, um, and what has took, um, place since we last talked to you guys. Um, I will let Robert kind of take over from now with the, with the updates and, and come back with any questions.
Thank you, nice to be here, nice to see everyone. Um, my name's Robert Sander, I'm a principal architect with Yamazaki Architects, uh, some of you I've met before in our event, uh, of last week, couple weeks ago, and, um, I don't know if you want to go to the next slide, but since we have limited time, I was just going to update you on the process that we're going forward with, uh, for the, for the project. Currently, the master plan has been completed and submitted in draft form, and we're waiting to receive comments from the various, uh, groups that are reviewing the document internally in terms of part of the development team. We'll go to the next one. We are, we have our own, uh, Romans, uh, development team, including leasing, legal, accounting, and other parties in addition to myself, of which I'm part of, the team are reviewing those documents so that we can then take that, um, design and initial concept into the, um, study phase. We've engaged traffic engineering, surveying, environmental studies, to be able to, um, fill out the rest of the picture, if you will, for the development of, of this very large master plan, the initial phase of which is contemplated to be the incubator, of course, as a priority. We are looking, moving on a parallel track in the development of the incubator building itself, which represents twenty thousand square feet of the project, but nevertheless, it's an incubator for local business potential, but also for the project itself. This project, the incubator, is, is something that is, we're going to be using as a, is a potential catalyst for the rest of development in terms of how we develop the architectural aesthetic, which is quite aggressive, as we know, it's, it's really something quite special, and so the incubator is going to be incubating not only local business, but it's also going to set precedence for the rest of development and the type of processes we're going to use to fabricate the exterior panels for the building and, and some of the other development that we're currently contemplating. Right now, from the terms of master plan, if you go to the next stage, keep going, if you would mind, we have to validate the, um, the, uh, the basic, uh, components of the master plan in terms of the impact to traffic, and, and of course, the DRI process has to be initiated, which we, I have engaged local consultants to assist us in this, in this, uh, process. That's actually typically what we do, we do, we do projects, uh, in the United States, but also abroad, and we usually partner with local firms in order to bring that local expertise and to bring, um, that, uh, ability to serve the project on a very timely manner to, to the, as is required for developments of this magnitude. So the initial phase, again, the incubator is our priority, but there is also residential component, a retail, and an amphitheater component, along with associated parking and infrastructure improvements that have to be designed. So currently, we're taking the master plan, and we're developing the demand analysis for mechanical electrical, uh, services to the project, so that we can then balance that initial phase, uh, development, uh, cost-wise, performer-wise, with the rest of the development team. Um, if you go to the next project, that obviously shows the site, most of you are aware of this, uh, development, keep going, please, next slide. Next slide. So, again, if you could go just back, maybe I could just end my rambling discussion here, but the, um, the overall, the, the, the master plan is centered around a very large amphitheater project and retail component, which has a seven thousand seat amphitheater, a multipurpose amphitheater. There is also, on the bottom right, is the incubator project of roughly twenty-two thousand square feet, that is actually the initial phase of the project. We are working now resolving some of the issues with the, the traffic and site location in order to free that up of other construction activities that are going to take place in the future, namely the parking garage, which is, uh, below grade, so bring that, that project is going to come outside of that location in order to make it, uh, to accelerate the schedule, in essence, and it doesn't require the type of investment at the parking structure as the rest of the development does, so it makes a lot of sense for us to refine part of the development, that's what we're doing currently. The high-rise residential towers are the next part of the phase, however, those aspects require, um, input from the other team members in terms of the, the, uh, absorption of the parking, the financing arrangement, and, and the timetable for absorption of the residential units on the market, so they will take a longer track schedule-wise, of course, much larger project. The amphitheater itself has its own programmatic requirements, operational requirements that Roman United is preparing and assembling a team to, to attack along with us as the designers, so that we can then begin to, uh, develop the full infrastructure plan and the phasing for the parking and so on, and come back to you with, with an update when those things begin to come into focus more with the full range of costs and development issues that have to be addressed, along with the, the traffic impact, which will be significant. So there are a lot of, uh, moving pieces taking place on this at the moment, and it's going to be, uh, a multi-month project that we're going to come back and update this, uh, board, uh, as we, as requested, and when necessary, so if you want to add anything more.
Yes, and, um, uh, just as the, uh, piggyback off of Robert, and we're also going through a significant RFP process, uh, we will be engaging with the pre-construction, um, company for all pre-construction managers who will actually sit in and act as a consultant, um, there will be, for any questions among the project, there will be a superintendent that will be on-site as we start to, um, grab the traction, and, and you guys can go by there, it'll be plans, all of the good stuff that you can, that you can see, ask questions to those particular superintendents. Uh, we will be engaging in the RFP right now also for, uh, joint venture with the, with a contractor who will kind of handle and orchestrate the first phase of the project, um, on the construction side, as we get, as we get into, um, uh, going into the process of going into vertical work, um, and also with, with Robert being a part of the team, um, if you guys know anything about Yamazaki, they are one of the top designers in, in the nation, um, you know, did the twin towers, he can, he can talk about it, he don't like to brag on himself, but, but, um, just the, just the infrastructure and design alone in those, in those particular buildings, um, he was there on, you know, ground zero in the days, and, you know, it's, it's, and also the, the, the components that he brings to the table, he would also be bringing, moving, um, a office here right inside of Atlanta, uh, right inside of Clayton, yep, and, and his Atlanta office will be local there, um, as we work with local engineering, um, firms that we're going to be kind of working with throughout the process. Our goal is to mainly, um, this is for, this project is for Clayton, we're here to do a project, and, and we're here to, and the magnitude of the project, you know, brings a, a lot of attention, but that's what we're here for, that's what, uh, Roman United was built for. Uh, we are a team, uh, I, I decided to bring on and, and make Robert believe in Clayton, um, uh, to be one of the top designers, you know, to bring this type of magnitude of a project here. Um, and, and Robert can kind of speak on, uh, his experience of project he's kind of working on now and the dynamics of the proper steps to make this project happen, and that's what, that's what we're, we're all about, going from this concept to the, to the pre-construction, to actually, you know, you guys seeing beautiful buildings going up. It's a, it's a process that, that, that takes time, but as you know, is, 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 this, this is not just building the incubator, it's not just building the amphitheater, it's not just building towers, it's building everything, you know, together, different components of this project, um, and the parking alone is, is, is key for this structure of going underground, so Robert, if you want to kind of engage on your...
I don't want to get into too much of our history, but yes, the firm is the original World Trade Center designers, and I did have a hand in it, although I was about three years old when they started designing on it, believe that or not, but, uh, yeah, I was involved in actually post-nine-eleven, uh, activities on-site to secure the structure with our structural engineering group, and to work with, uh, the Port Authority on developing replacement cost models for the Port Authority and the development group that was associated there. So I've had that experience, it was kind of a life-changing experience, as it was for many people, but, um, we have been involved in a lot of other work, we do a lot of work with the Federal Reserve, serve the Federal Reserve system in Richmond, Virginia, Baltimore, as well as Charlotte for the fifth district, and have done any from new construction for a million square foot facility in Richmond originally, to renovating every bit of that facility over a twenty-year period with new technology enhancements and so on, as well as blast mitigation enhancements after nineteen ninety-three bombing at the Trade Center, so we were, I've had a long history with, uh, with the Federal Reserve, serving them as a long-term client. We've done work overseas, the People's Bank of China, we've done the Saudi Arabia Monetary Agency, which is essentially the Fort Knox for Saudi Arabia. Domestically, we, we've done a lot of developer work, that's why I'm here actually, and, uh, office as well as hotel, we just finished a Marriott unique residence in, non, non-prototype with using, actually, Diversicorp, which is an Atlanta-based, uh, structural panel consult, company, which was a great experience, and somebody we'd look to tap again... somebody we'd look to tap again when we get into a detailed discussion about structure for these residential towers and office towers. So we're excited about participating in this project and being invited to, to do that, and would look to build, as we do in all of our projects where we work, long-term, large mixed-use projects, we have to have a team on-ground. We like to take some more people from our home base office in Detroit and then populate with local people that have experience with the local markets and, and talent, and hopefully those, those offices continue on as living, breathing entities going forward. So we're excited to be part of it, and thank you, and appreciate your time. We'd like to take any questions you may have.
All right, any questions? All right, here and now, thank you very much for your presentation. We look forward to hearing you again.
Thank you.
When there's something more further to, to report to us.
Chair, any commissioners want to want to update?
Yes.
They're hoping to come, one-on-one, come to the committee meetings. All that's on the table to make sure you all understand exactly what's going on.
Okay.
And if you need something in between, call me, you'll get it.
Thank you.
Is this, is this, is this actually, I mean, is this signed off and going forward?
Her question was, is this going forward? But yes, everything's been in place. They did the little groundbreaking, what, a couple of weeks ago?
Yes.
Two or three weeks?
It's going, we're moving forward with it.
So the commission is not involved in this in any way?
No, you hired me to...
Yeah, Commissioner, so this board took the action of the incubator portion only. We provided $4 million of SPOSS money. We did an IGA between the Board of Commissioners and Development Authority to manage that portion of the project. So the county's investment is the $4 million, and then Development Authority is serving as the project manager for that portion. So you look at the rest of the project as being private development.
Any other questions?
Yes. The $4 million, when we talk about our portion of it, how much of this project has to be completed before the $4 million from SPOSS is used even through the IGA?
They're billing us as, as an invoice, they're invoicing us as they take on additional elements within that project. So as they're doing A&E work, they actually provide us the actual invoicing of the work, and then we pay out based upon the invoicing.
How much has been paid out so far?
I don't believe we've paid out anything right now. There's been some preliminary discussions with Mr. Vincent and working with our Building and Maintenance Department and some others through some of the preliminary development and giving us schematics of the incubator, but we have not cut a check to the Development Authority.
I think that for this presentation, and what I was hoping to see is that you, that would be presented to the board, because the bottom line is, we've seen these photos kind of for a while now, but what we need to see is a specific timeline. Has it gone through the state processes, through the departments, to even be vetted, to make sure that a project like this was fit for this topography, this place on the land? I was hoping to hear that. I was also hoping to hear that if any A&E had been completed, that they could be able to tell us the processes that has been completed, which are usually the steps for any project, particularly before a ribbon cutting. So because the total cost of this project is how much again?
What's the total cost here?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred million. Eight hundred million. And so the only thing right now, okay, so with the 800 million, help me understand how we're going to get to that space or place, because it sounds like, if I just heard correctly, with the Development Authority, we have contributed to 4 million. So where are we sourcing funds for 800 million, 800 million-dollar project?
Well, as the CEO stated, that's private investment coming in.
Okay.
So they're bringing their own financing. The county is not on the hook for anything.
Other than...
You actually paid $0 to this project as of today, and as they go through with the incubator process, of course, your team would be present to make sure that is managed properly and correctly, and as Mr. Zantner shared with you, the DRI, all that process is taking place now. Some work has taken place already, and yes, the ARC and the DRR process, all that will be accomplished.
So how much of the DRR process has been completed so far?
You all want to share that?
Because I know part of it goes through Greta and...
Yes.
The team that I've worked with, with the ATL, even like, will be able to see some of that.
Yes.
So it's not come before me at all.
They've sent us the guidelines and what is needed to be submitted to them, and this team is working on it.
What's needed to be submitted. Okay, thank you, Mr. Vincent, because you said what's needed to be submitted. So how much of the DRI process has been completed?
Well, we have now the feasibility study and the master plan, which gives us the quantities of the different uses on-site, and our traffic engineer is now forecasting traffic movements and impact to traffic. So nothing's been submitted, but we're in process on the calculations that will allow us to submit a report to...
Got it. How long do you suspect that might take for you all to be able to do that?
It's going to be another two to three weeks.
Two to three weeks?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question, too. Commissioner Anderson?
I know that the school system is building a Coliseum right up the street.
Yes.
So have you all talked, talked to them about what you all are doing, because your capacity is about the same as their capacity of what they're trying to do for the community? So, you know, I just wanted to make sure if you've talked to the chair, if you've talked to, and so what was, what were the findings?
We met with the superintendent, Dr. Smith, and his construction team, and the finding is, there's no competition there.
Okay.
The, the school system, they have their guidelines, but it is a school system, not an entertainment system. So how that will work over there, they got their graduation center, and with the, what we're building here is a for-profit center, and there's enough to go around for everyone in the entertainment world. So we, we did, we met with those guys several times, and they're aware of what we're doing, what we're, what they're doing. We're also looking at utilizing some of their parking space to do shuttle service to that area, just like you do up in Aforretta with their outdoor amphitheater, and they're a big project, they're big concerts.
Thank you.
Yes, the ownership of that property, who owns that property?
You all own it, you, you leased it, you gave it to us, and we're leasing it back to this project. And at some point down the road, when all of the debt is clear on it, then that could be a purchase, a direct purchase of it from the county.
But right now, we own it and leased it to you all.
You, you, I own it, you transferred it over to the Development Authority to move this project forward.
Zoning and all that has gone through?
Not yet, because as, as I stated during my comments of groundbreaking, we've never built anything like this in Clayton County. So yes, we'll be working with the city of Morrow and the city of Lake City and Clayton County, because this will be our first high-rises ever built south of Midtown. So it's a big learning curve there, for us, and the zoning is part of this ongoing process. And once we get through with our work in about two to three weeks, then we better go to Morrow and Lake City. And the next question is, yes, they both have been involved from day one.
Oh, so you can break ground without zoning?
Is this a ribbon cutting? They didn't actually break ground.
Oh, ribbon cutting.
Ribbon cutting.
And more or less an announcement of the project. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
All right, we will now be hearing from G. Dot this afternoon. We'll go to essential workers. I don't know who is presenting that. Please come forward, though.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, we appreciate your time tonight. I'm Tony Tilly with the Communication Workers of America. I'd like to apologize right off. Louis, who has been working with y'all to get this presentation set up, had a health situation tonight, a medical situation, and so he's not here to do the presentation, so I'm going to try to fill in. I'm here with folks from the New Georgia Project Action Fund and CASA. Why are we here? So CWA represents workers. Most of them are in the communication industry. We have people on our college campuses, 23 out of 26 universities under the university system of Georgia. We have airline employees. We found out when COVID hit that our essential workers had a lot of problems, whether it was broadband access for their kids, whether it was, was childcare for their kids because they were still having to go to work. Luckily for our folks, they had us to turn to and help work with the companies to fix and overcome some of these. But only 4% of workers in Georgia have a union contract. That means 96% of workers have no way, nowhere to turn when it comes to situations at work. And so we feel if counties would come in and create essential worker advisory boards from all the different industries, whether it's your healthcare, your schoolteachers, your, your trash collectors, every industry, your grocery workers, your hotel workers, all of these folks that we found were so essential to all of us having our daily needs met, they had nobody to meet their needs. And we believe if they can come together, these are voluntary positions, these aren't asking you for money. These were people that would have to volunteer from each of these industries to come together and find, first of all, discuss what are our problems, and then them come up with solutions, that they can bring the county commission and say, hey, if our county helps us do this with our employers, then we, as essential workers, would have a voice, and we would be safer, and our families would be better off. And so that is why I got involved with this wonderful group of coalition partners, and I do have them, if they would like to say a few words and introduce themselves. But again, that is what we're here to start the conversation on. We, as a group, have worked on some bylaws of who would be covered, who would sit on the board, and I know Louis sent that to y'all. We do have a small PowerPoint that he put together. So we have tried to do the groundwork to get started on, and we're hoping that Clayton County will be one of those counties that steps up and decides that this is something that's good for them, and I'll be glad to turn it over to...
Yeah, hi, everybody. My name's Eric Robertson. I'm with the New Georgia Project Action Fund. I'm a lead organizer. I work on a campaign called Worker Voices for a New Georgia. And the reason we're involved in this effort is because, like Tony said, COVID really revealed a fault line in the things that we have to protect our most essential workers, and it really laid bare the necessity of not just waiting till the next catastrophe to figure it out again. And so we're offering this up as a solution, as a concrete solution. Obviously, things can be altered and changed to fit the needs of the particular counties, but this framework has worked in Harris County, Texas. It's actually an existing advisory board in Harris County, Texas, which is Dallas, I believe, and, is it Houston? I'm sorry. Texas is a big place. The, but, and so we know that this works, but also, conceptually, it's, it's something that can be changed to meet the needs of the existing workforces in these counties, but we do know for a fact that something has to be created, because there, like Tony said, there's only 4% of workers in Georgia who have unions, and the rest of these workers are either reliant on the federal, or the state, or the county, or the city government. And where that, we know that Georgia, in Georgia, there's not a lot of laws that are designed to assist working folks, and, and where there are those laws, they're, 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 they're very short in time. So thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Michaela. I am a community organizer with the organization CASA. At CASA, we are the foremost immigrant justice organization on the East Coast, and we are made up of services and local as well as national initiatives. We build campaigns from the ground up to support community organizing against a number of issues, such as housing, environment, labor, transportation, and other areas of focus. So our members are supported by our organization to build local power and further resource different areas so that we and our members can live in healthy, sustained, and thriving communities.
Hello, my name is Alberto. I'm also a community organizer with CASA. Thank you for allowing us to present this proposal. As Michaela mentioned, we, as community organizers, we speak a lot to the, right, to the people in our communities, and especially, well, you know, Michaela and I being immigrants, the immigrants across Canton, Clowney, Metro Atlanta, and Georgia, right, make up the vibrant communities in these states and participate in our state and local economies throughout the pandemic, as, you know, our partners mentioned, right, they were at the front lines of the pandemic, working in essential worker services, all the services that they mentioned. So we're just joining our partners here to propose and highlight the importance of creating this essential worker advisory board. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Any questions from the board?
I have a question. I want to know, generally, when you all formed these boards, how many people do you, do you generally have on the board?
I do apologize, because again, I wasn't, I'd expected to do the presentation, but in our, I believe in our bylaws, we did set both how many people would be on the board, we set how long their tours would last, and they would be staggered so that you, you change them out.
Okay.
And I've got a copy of the bylaws on my phone, I'd have to look at, but I can get you that answer.
Okay.
But I don't want to quote you the wrong one. At the same time, like we said, y'all, y'all have, y'all would appoint the board, so y'all would have a right to decide how many people you want on it. We just came up with a basics that we thought, and we did actually, in the bylaws, make a few specific job titles that we thought should be, like healthcare teachers, certain jobs that we thought definitely needed to be sitting on that board. It doesn't mean that you have to accept those, you can change it, alter it however you want.
And how many counties in Georgia have, have, have started these boards?
You are our first presentation, our first county, and because I live in Henry County, we had a meeting set up with the chair last week, but she had to cancel. We are trying to get, with Chair Harold down there, and also reach out to Henry County. Y'all are our first two counties that we decided was, was where we wanted to start this in Georgia. So y'all have the opportunity to lead the way and set the standard for all the other counties in this state.
Any other questions? All right, thank you for being here.
Thank you so much for your time.
For your presentation, sir. Thank you. All right, let's go to status update on county administration bill.
Chairman, before we do that, I need to provide a correction to this board. We actually have paid out $559,000 to Roman United for A&E work. We received 100% conceptual design from them already, so that is a correction. They have received $559,000.
So I, we paid $559,000. I'll wait to be...
Go ahead, Commissioner.
We paid $559,000.
Right.
For A&E design.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Is that designed for the...
Incubator.
Incubator.
Yes, ma'am.
Our, our portion.
But that incubator is also in concert with the rest of the project, correct?
I'm trying...
That's why I was asking the questions when they were here. They're gone now, and basically, what we heard was the DRI had not been submitted, they were still in a feasibility study. So I'm a little confused at how we get to paying out for A&E designs when they're still in the feasibility study.
Commissioner, let me speculate. So again, our PDC have been part of some of those preliminary discussions, so I'm going to ask Marty to come forth and provide context to specifically what we've gotten and what we paid out. Again, the $559,000 is reflection of the 100% concept design for the incubator, but he can tell you specifically about what those billables were around.
So we paid over a half a million dollars just for the concept, but not, hadn't gone through the proper zoning, DRI, feasibility?
Correct. We currently have conceptual design, which we have paid out $559,000 to Roman United.
And is that conceptual design just for our piece of the project, or...
That's, that's just for the incubator space.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And nobody knew this when this was on the agenda until afterwards?
No, ma'am. The question was about the fees that were being paid out.
Yes.
Yes. So clearly, my staff was aware of the details regarding that, but I didn't ask them that question on the front end, because again, Development Authority serves as the, the project manager, so the money should be coming from, should be signed off by the Development Authority prior to any money going to Roman United, and we should make sure that's happening because they're serving as the project manager, not the county.
Okay, so the money didn't come from the commissioners, it came from Development Authority?
No.
Oh, no, we, we have lost...
It came from our SPOSS, our SPOSS balance. So the money came from the county, but the project manager should be signing off on that prior to it going to any vendor beforehand. So when, so when we provided you information about zero being... So when, so when we provided you information about zero being paid out, that was inaccurate.
Any other questions? Thank you, Marty.
Good evening, Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. I'm actually excited to be able to be here for this presentation. I'm here with our friends from Nelson Worldwide, Claudia Haynes and Amelia Kaywood. They're going to come forward and give you a more thorough presentation on where we stand with the design for the county administrative building. After they do their presentation, I'll be here to answer any questions. Ladies, the floor is yours.
Good evening, I am Amelia Kaywood. I am the...
Speaking to the mic.
Sorry, thank you. Good evening, I'm Amelia Kaywood. I am the interior design project manager for the project. This is Claudia Haynes. She is the architectural project manager. And we are going to give you first an outlook of what we've done in the past year on the project, as well as what we're currently working on and our future steps. So look, yep, there we go. Go back. There we go. Looking back, we started in April 2021. We, we started off with what we call programming, which is our investigation into y'all's needs as a county and where, where that needs to set us up for the future. So Claudia, talk about the site plan.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Claudia Haynes. Regarding site planning, programming, what we've done so far is we've been coordinating with utility companies, for example, Georgia Power, on power pole locations, et cetera, on our site. As you know, we're in this intersection of Smith and Lee Street. We've surveyed the land with our geotech consultants. We've determined soil suitability. We've determined building locations, and this means the administrative building location and the park, proposed parking deck structure location. We have a slide and a couple slides that shows you that. We've also been talking to the city of Jonesboro specifically on preapprovals permitting variances and how to go through zoning. We've also been talking to the fire marshal regarding the position of the buildings on the site and how they can go about the site to address their needs in terms of life safety.
In regards to the building program, we started off with both tours of all your existing departments that are moving into the building, as well as interviews with each department. And we talked through their organizational chart, what their current staffing is like, what their future staffing is projected to be like. And we, from all of our interviews, we were able to get a total square footage of what the building would need to be. And from there, we looked at floor and department adjacencies. What department needs to be on what floor? How many floors do we need the building to be to fit on the site plan? So we did all of that, and once we got approval, we went to the building exterior interior layout. This allowed us to guarantee that the building could fit on the site, and then as well as how many, making sure we can guarantee all the offices that we said, all the building amenities that we said were going to be there could actually fit in the building. So we created that building layout, which then got approval, and from there, we moved into design development and 80% construction drawings. Our design development did everything from the finishes, making sure we were meeting the finishes' needs, your AV, your IT, your security. We met with critical, critical infrastructure to make sure that we were meeting life safety. We met with security to make sure we were meeting the security needs. And then from that, we focused into construction drawings, making sure that we were, all of those details were going to be able to be physically built. And we turned in our 80% construction drawings to the county two weeks ago, and so it's currently under review. So where we are currently, we are working towards 90% construction drawings. This will incorporate any comments from the county on 80% set. It is an ongoing coordination with our specialty consultants. We have a few specialty items going into this building, like the chambers, as well as the communications department and their studios. So we brought on a specialty consultant who specializes in that type of AV. So we are working with them to confirm and make sure we're building all this infrastructure we need to, to support y'all in the future building. And then once we have this, our 90% set, will be issued for final estimated pricing.
Like I mentioned previously, we got with the city of Jonesboro to go through the process for zoning and how to address variances that we needed. And this is something that is ongoing as well, and it is a time-sensitive situation. We do need to decide as soon as possible if we want to rezone the site, which is what the city of Jonesboro has suggested us to do. The building has a big square foot area to be able to hold all of the departments under one roof. It also has a parking deck on the site, and this parking deck is a five-story parking deck. It is shy of 60 feet tall, as well as the building. So when talking to the city of Jonesboro with Mr. Ricky Clark Jr. and Mr. David Allen, they had suggested for us to rezone the property, to go into the city center mixed-use district to allow us for those components. So I believe that this was brought up before, and we're just hoping to get some kind of approval to move forward with that, and if not, we just want to know so that we can just know how to permit the drawings with the city of Jonesboro and make a new plan.
So looking, oh.
So after we get our permit, the next thing that will happen is that we're going to go into bid to get our general contractor. We are currently, the drawings are currently under review by our estimator, and probably a lot of information will come back to do some potential value engineering on the building. We expect that more value engineering will be available after or during the GC selection. After the GC is selected, it will take about, we've estimated that the parking deck portion of the project will be the first one to get started, to get built. Due to the site, the parking deck is located on the, right behind our building on the north side of the property, and to be able to get there, we need to start with the parking deck first. This, we have estimated that it's going to take about eight months to do. After that is finalized, the administrative building portion will get started. I'm not saying that it's exactly like that, that things cannot be done at the same time. We'll definitely get more information once we pick the general contractor. They'll be able to give us more detailed information on how they plan to do all this.
We estimate that the administrative building will take 18 months to complete, and then after construction is done, unfortunately, that doesn't mean you just get to move right in. We still need to do furniture installation, and that we estimate to take about a month for all of that process to happen. And then you will want to, we will schedule time for each department to get moved in and comfortable in their space, and then we anticipate an opening to the public in the fourth quarter of 2025. And then, this is our conceptual site plan.
For those of you who are not familiar with this, of course, we're in the intersection right here of Lee and Smith. The proposed building is on that intersection, and the main entrance to the public's, public is on the corner, right there as you cross to the park. This will have the most people and pedestrians, and due to the grade, Smith Street goes up, there will be a ramp going up to the building for 88 purposes, and there also will be a couple of steps to go up into the corner of the main entrance of the building. We have a floor plan to show you what happens inside. On the back of the building, on the east side, we have our loading dock area, and on the north portion of the administrative building, right off the north, we have a secured parking space for commissioners. North of that, behind 112th, we have the parking deck structure where employees park and visitors. They will walk down towards the building, and the employee entrances are on the east side of the building and on the north side.
Is it connected to the building? Do you have to go outside?
Correct. The parking deck is, the main parking deck structure is not connected to the building, but there is surface parking on the north that is for commissioners. That is right off the building. It's a secured area for parking.
So we're going to run through the three floors of the building. This is the first floor, so you can see in the southwest side, the bottom corner of the plan is your public entrance. From there, we have a security checkpoint, so everyone will have to go through security to get to the main lobby area. Our lobby is very large, because it feeds directly into the chambers, as well as creates a holding place for anyone who needs to get back to any of the departments. They can wait there to be escorted back. We did design this lobby to hold 300 people, which is how much your chambers sit. So we specifically wanted to make sure that was a comfortable waiting area. And then plan north is where you have your chambers, and then on this floor, on the first floor, we had, we have the communications department that includes their studios and their print room. We also have the Office of Economic Development, and we have that, and that is actually the south portion of the plan, right next to the main entrance, so that they have a very easy access in to the building. And then we also have security on this first floor, right next, right north of the entrance. On the second floor, we, oh, sorry, went too far. The second floor, we have both HR and finance. HR takes up the northern portion of the plan, and then finance takes up the southern portion of the plan. On the third floor, we have the COO's department. All of your commissioners sit in the south, facing Smith Street. And then we have legal as well, and then we also have some future growth square footage.
I want to go back one slide real quick. I wanted just to point out that we know security is something that's important for you to be able to go up to the second and third floors. You have to be checked in, you have to be taken up. The elevators have card readers that only employees can use. So if you want to go up to the upper floors, you need to be accompanied by somebody that has that security clearance. So going to this slide showing the entrance of the building, one of the feedback that we've gotten is just to make sure that we have some bollards in place at the corner of Lee and Smith, just in case that, you know, there's any cars or anything that might want to go in or, you know, anything of the nature. So we are looking into what additional items we can add here. So in this view, you can see kind of like the, the corner of the building, the front, where a lot of the pedestrian traffic is going to be, especially on that corner. People could sit on that planter that's there on the corner, right in front of the flags. And that wall where people can sit is a good deterrent for any vehicles that are trying to get in the building. About the materials that we chose, they're trying to keep the palette very neutral. The exterior is mainly limestone masonry material. We have a lot of glass, it's important to get all of the light inside. You will see that in the next few slides. And we have a little bit of a warm wood that we're using on the overhang and on the underside of the entrance, on the entry vestibule. Going to the next slide, this is Smith Street. Smith changes grade, it goes up pretty quickly. So a portion of the building, this is the east side of the building where kind of like the back is where the print shop is and the loading dock area is. It is below Smith Street by about eight feet. So around that area, we do have to introduce some railing, just for security. This is the backside of the building where the elementary school is at. We did not include any of the elementary school elements or fences, just so that we could see the building. But this is the backside of the building where the secure parking is, and there's a small vestibule right tucked in the corner where that is one of the employee entrances directly into the building. The other employee entrance would be on the left side of the screen, along the, the loading dock area. The small volume that you see on the right, that's the chamber, and it's a volume in itself. This is a view from Lee Park. Also on the left is where we have the chamber, and then on top of that, we have a balcony overlooking Lee Street. Most of our accents are in bronze color. This includes lighting on the outside, the pulls for the doors, and other little accents that just bring the palette together that we then take to the interior of the building. This is the proposed parking deck rendering. It will have two entrances, one on the lower side or on the west side, one on the, on the east side. The grading helps us. The, the site back here does go up towards the east, so this helps us have two entrances on different floors. The east side of the parking deck is lower than, than the west side, and it, the tallest part of this tower that you're seeing here on the left, that is shy of 60 feet, and this tower has an elevator and stairs. The other tower on the other side, on the right side of the screen, it only has stairs. And yes, people would walk from that structure down to the administrative building.
How many cars?
Around, right around 300. We're estimating 308, but we are still going through some of the design, and we might need some parking spaces back.
As we move into the interior space of the building, this is, we wanted to really bring the elements that Claudia talked through from the outside inside. So we wanted to really highlight our day lighting in the building. We wanted to make sure it was a warm, welcoming place to work and for the public to engage with you. So this is our lobby. So we have this voluminous two-story space. We have our logo, your logo right as you enter, and then where you see, you see your security checkpoint. So the security checkpoint is behind bullet braided glass, and there will also be all their needs behind that, that, those windows. And then once you get through your, through security, you get to, this, there you go. You have your, this is what we're calling our waiting area in the lobby. So we, again, this very large two-story space, we really wanted to celebrate and make a statement. We also know that acoustics are important. So the, what you're seeing on the left side, that looks, sorry, that looks like stone is actually acoustical panel that we're using to mimic stone, and then we have other acoustical elements in the ceiling as well. But we have a terrazzo floor and a, a pattern that actually mimics and draws inspiration from your logo, and then we have this really nice stone element that's going all the way up the wall. And then into your chambers, we're taking those same elements and bringing them into the chambers. Like Claudia said before, this really is kind of a building on of itself, so we really wanted, we had, again, that two-story volume. We're bringing the wood in to really, again, celebrate that, that natural element and bring warmth and a welcoming environment. You have windows all the way on two sides, your backside and your west side, and then we're bringing, again, acoustical panels all the way around. So again, we help with those acoustics, and then having a stone backdrop behind the dais with your seal. And as a part of, as I mentioned earlier, we're working with a specialty AV consultant, and this is just kind of to show... Um, and this is just kind of to show you on some of our ongoing conversations. We're talking through, this is just a sketch we actually were looking at earlier today. Um, talking through what does the AV components look like for the ch- the chambers? Um, so right now, we're looking at projection screens that can be recessed in, and then when you're, they're not in use, they're completely not seen. And then when they do need to be used, they're lowered so that everyone has visibility in the space.
How many people, how many people, um, can be seated?
Three hundred. Um, and then this is what we're, are looking at for the chamber, uh, CO's office as well as yours office. All this office sizes are the same. Um, and we're, again, really wanting to bring that natural daylight into the space, and we wanna take it in as far as possible. Um, but also keeping that nice, warm, welcoming look. You're serving the public. We wanna make sure that the public feels welcome there, but the, also that you guys are able to work well in that space. Um, so we really have the, a nice calming feel and the very elevated. Um, in this rendering, if you were, um, just around the corner, if you were to like turn this way from the rendering, you would have your private restrooms. And then your aides would be right outside. Um, we have a smattering of conference rooms throughout the building, and again, we wanted to make it clean. And we wanted to make it a very engaging space because you're having a bunch of different conferences, you're meeting about different things. We don't want the focus to be of the room, we want the focus to be on the content that you're meeting about. So, just a very clean conference room for you guys to work in. And then, most importantly, your break rooms. Um, we, this is where your community happens. We really wanted to make this a fun place for the employees to engage and have community with each other and to build relationships between departments as well. Um, so we want, so we brought in a lot of pops of color blues to make it fun and exciting. Oop, and questions?
Alright.
I'm trying to keep 'em in shape, y'all, so we need a workout room, okay?
Alright, and questions for?
Uh, yes, how many, how many break rooms?
Um, so there are three break rooms, one per floor, and then there's actually a warming kitchen for the, um, the, oh, why am I blanking on the word? The executive session, executive session, uh, conference room? Behind the chambers, thank you. And then also for, um, like you have now for the commissioner, uh, for the chairman's, uh, um, conference room. Or, that's right there, yes, that everyone shares.
How many bathrooms?
Uh.
So, I wanna point out, let me point out the core of the building, the center portion, which is basically repeated, uh, almost exactly the same on every floor. Uh. Thank you.
Um, so let's start on the left side, Amelia. Uh, we have a public restroom on every floor, which on the third floor, we have two, um, stalls for women, uh, and two for men. Uh, we also, right above that, have the stairs of the building, which go up and down, um, you know, first to third floor. We have, right next to that on the right side, a little employee lobby area uh, with elevators that are to be used only for employees. The public elevator is outside that area. Um, and that is where people would go up and down, uh, uh, with somebody else that works in the building that has the security clearance to bring them up and down. Uh, we cannot go into the area that Amelia is pointing out right now without going through a secured door. That leads you basically to the employee-only area. And that employee-only area is the lobby that I just talked about. There's utility rooms for uh, telecom, electrical, um, there's some storage, and then we have the employee restrooms, completely separate from the public ones. And there we have, I think it's four stalls for women and four for men. Um, to the right side of that, uh, we go into a wellness room. Um, we also have some print, um, areas and, uh, the break room. So, this is basically exactly the same as the second floor. Um. It mimics the second floor exactly. And then, uh, to end the core of the building on the right side, where we had the other set of stairs, we do have a back-of-house elevator, a service elevator, uh, for bigger items that need to be carried up and down, so that you don't um, mess the, the, the nicer ones up, up at the front. Uh, male, et cetera. So, those are the, the components that repeat, uh, throughout the building.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Commissioner Hamper.
Uh, starting date, did you mention something about the zoning with Jonesboro that it was a sensitive time? So, when is that, and then when is the actual start date that counts for the eighteen months?
Um, so, uh, city of Jonesboro has, like you guys have, um, meetings every month to discuss items. Uh, we need to finalize the applications, uh, to change our zoning, if that's the way that we're, uh, moving forward. Uh, we need to give those at the beginning of the month. There is a month that they need to advertise in the online newspaper uh, about the re-zoning that's about to happen. Uh, and then they meet, um, at the beginning of the next month to, uh, go through the items and the agenda and finalize the re-zoning process. So, that takes a month to do. Um, the next time that we can give the applications in, eh, we're in September right now, it's, it would be November. Uh, and their board meeting would be in December. So.
Or it's October.
Oh, yeah, October. October, and then the meeting would be in November. Sorry, yes. Um, so, we cannot go into permitting, even if we have our drawings ready, without going through that. So, that is why it is time-sensitive for us. And if that's not the way we're gonna do, we just wanna know so that we can just start another process, whatever that may be. Just get our variance system.
I'm sorry. So, basically, you just mean from us, whether to move forward or not?
Correct.
Is this the location that it's gonna be in?
We're bringing some additional information to the board on Tuesday night, Jeremy.
Okay. Okay. We'll have a decision for you Tuesday night.
Thank you, sir.
And then eighteen months is counted from the?
Correct. So, then, um, we need to go through a permitting process, which we, um, have estimated to be around eight to twelve weeks. Um, after the permitting process and after we have all of the comments from the city in our drawings, then we go through the bidding process, um, to select a GC. So, that in itself is, takes a while, and I forget at this moment how many weeks we have for that. Um, and then after the GC is selected, um, they have about, um, I don't know, uh, about eight to ten weeks of procurement, which means that once the GC is selected, they need to go and select their subcontractors. Uh, they need to start getting shop drawings from, anyways, they start their construction process, but it doesn't mean that they can just go and, and open the ground. They just need to start procurement and get all their paperwork started. Um, after those eight to ten weeks, uh, then we start the eight months for construction for the parking deck. Um, and hopefully, it overlaps also with the construction of the administrative building, which we are estimating at this point is gonna be eighteen months. And the way we know this is that we've hired an estimator, uh, to give us all this information to just inform, um, to the best of our abilities um, when the project can be completed. But, um, once we have a GC, they will be the ones that control that schedule, and they will be the ones that can say, uh, you know, we can, we don't need this amount of time, or we can overlap this. They're the, they're gonna be the experts on how to really pu- pull all this together.
Commissioner Franklin, you have something?
Yes, I do. We're gonna start with the restrooms. So, what, and in order to get there, I need to ask a question. What is the total capacity of each floor and in total for the building?
Um, we have definitely done those calculations and they are on our eighty percent set. Um. The capacity, um, we have calculated using the life safety and, uh, international building codes, et cetera. And per square footage, uh, we have determined that. Uh, for the first floor, I cannot tell you right now, but it's in our plans and I can send you that information, but we've calculated that it's around four hundred to five hundred people based on square footages, not necessarily on the people that are gonna be working there, because that's, that's separate. Uh, for the second and third floors is less, um, per square footages, it is around two hundred and fifty people. And on the third floor, I know that we cannot pass, uh, five hundred people. So, on the third floor, the occupancy is around four hundred and ninety. Um, and the reason I know this is because we are having, we have two sets of stairs, uh, which maximizes the life safety capacity. We cannot have more than five hundred people per floor, except on the first floor. So, if you want the exact numbers, I can give them to you. I just don't have them right.
The reason I'm asking is to, two reasons. First of all, for, so, if my math is correct, on average, we're talking about this building would contain anywhere from, um, twelve hundred and fifty people on average. And then, of course, you, you add your percentages of occupancy, as you stated, with the eighty percent and so forth. But you also said that on the floors, there are only four stalls. But, and then even with the auditorium, there are three hundred people that could be seated in the auditorium, but there are only four stalls.
Okay.
Male and female.
Um.
Separate.
Point out the restrooms. Okay, so on the first floor, we have more restrooms, um, than on any other floor.
Okay.
Um, so, the first ones that I wanna point out are the public restrooms. Uh, and these have more stalls than on the second and third. They have three and three. Can I, yes. Um, the, these serve the chambers, uh, and we've done the calculation, uh, so that we're, um, per the international plumbing code and building code, um, for the actual chamber council, uh, men and women, we have another two restrooms in the back. And the way that you access them is behind the dais. You can walk down to them. And those are right next to, uh, an executive conference room, that is for the commissioners before the meetings. Uh, so those two also count, um, towards your, uh, population count, uh, for restrooms. And then, um, we also have the employee restrooms, which take care of the rest of the population, um, inside the employee area. Uh, we have other restrooms that are just, for example, in the communications studio, there's a small one. It's kind of like a changing room. Um, and, and also restroom, we have not counted that for, uh, per international building code. That doesn't, it, it's not adding to our, to our account for that. Um, it's just something that was needed, um, for their specific use.
Okay. Uh, that's, I understand of what you're stating, but right now in this building, I don't think we have as many people. How many people are currently in this building? Cause we've got more stalls than that already. And less people are in the building currently.
Commissioner, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, between finance, BOC, legal, um, in this building, there's somewhere in the neighborhood, just over a hundred, maybe a hundred and twenty in the building.
So, based upon the calculations, just looking at it, just back since you're estimating, I'm gonna estimate, we're gonna have less restrooms per the people that are currently in the building. It's just something that kinda, that we may wanna look back at. I do like the fact that you all have come with a detailed conceptual design, so that gives us an opportunity to really, um, take a look at what's being proposed. But I know we had spoken previously about adding in a library component, and I could tell you, even though it sits within the city and then it's necessarily not in District Three, a lot of the residents in the district where I'm commissioner, they're blowing up my phone as we speak, that are saying that, um, asking about us to revisit that. That's not so much a question for you, but we just need to kinda think about it. Also, uh, Mr. Stanford, you stated that you were gonna bring in a couple of more sites on the next board meeting. Is that what you state? What, what did you say about the site? Can you clarify that? About zoning and so forth?
I just said that we'll bring some additional information to the board at the next board meeting.
Additional info? Okay, okay. So, the site is the site. I wanna make sure I heard that clear.
We will bring some additional information to the board at the next board meeting.
Okay. So, how much have we spent so far on this conceptual design that is based upon us having to get through the additional information? How much have we spent so far on this piece? We are, I mean, that, but, I'm sorry. Our staff should know how much we've spent on it. Okay. Alright, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, ladies, for your presentation and for the work that you put in thus far.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, ladies.
Yes, thank you, definitely. And I'm so sorry, one more. These windows, security. That's a lot of windows, unless they bulletproof. And, and then also efficiency. I mean, that's, I'm being honest, that's a concern. I, I, I've seen within jurisdictions, they're peeling back from so much open space that is unprotected, so that's a concern.
So, we are working with the critical infrastructure team, uh, per this board's direction, uh, to get some insight on those specific concerns about bulletproof glass. We've talked about ballistics glass on the first floor, uh, to avoid from somebody coming up and using a handgun or any other weapons. Um, from, this is the built, for this is going to be our first lead credential building in the county. And one of the lead credentialing requirements is that you have, um, sunlight activity into the space. So, you, you balance some of that from an efficiency standpoint. The lead requires certain efficiencies that are gonna be there, and that's what the, um, the R factor, windows typically have a lower, um, R factor, which is the amount of refraction it has to keep your insulation, your cool inside, your heat inside versus outside. Um, but, the lead dictates a lot of that to us.
Okay, I got you on that. But the safety of our employees is first and foremost to me.
Absolutely.
And, and it's no secret that we've had to deal with that at Flint River.
Yes, ma'am.
Where a, what it was designed as, I guess somebody said a BB gun of some sort. So, this is great in terms of the conceptual design and it looks good, but safety of our employees is very important. So, we gotta find that balance.
Absolutely. We agree completely, and that's why we have been working closely with the critical infrastructure team. I think we have one more meeting with them that we're getting ready, that we're scheduling currently. So, they, they've been a part of this design the entire time.
And the other thing I would, I wanna know is who's gonna sign off on it, because a lot of our buildings, I'm getting feedback now that they are leaking steel, and I wanna make sure that from the concept and from the beginning, we're taking into account the materials. And, and ladies, this was a great presentation, and it looks beautiful, but I wanna make sure functionality is gonna work, because we don't wanna have to find out that they have not used the materials that are needed to make sure the building is sa- safe, and then also is secure from moisture. Thus, those are my concerns.
And, and, and those are my concerns as well, Commissioner, and now we will, um, if I may, that was part of why two years ago, we started the planning, design, and construction division in, in building maintenance. Um, one of those buildings that is leaking currently, we are working to rectify that issue because the previous management didn't manage it appropriately. We've also moved from the design-build phase, where you hire a contractor who then brings in an architect to try to move things forward, to a design-bid-build. So, the architect has come in, they are designing per hour specifications to what we are asking for, and then we will take that out to the street to bring in a contractor, and then the architect stays involved as our consultant, not as the general contractors, as our advocate, and we will continue to do in routine inspections through the contract phase, ensuring in our OAC meetings, the, uh, owner, architect, contractor meetings, that everybody is up to speed and everybody knows what's going on, so we don't continue to have those issues.
Awesome. And I have a question for our new chief. So, that means that your group will be signing off on these? Who's gonna be signing off on the CO's? Cause, again, I'm getting calls from developers and even the issues we're having now. They're not wanting to touch new projects to fix them, cause they're not gonna put their bond up for something that wasn't done right. And they're, and we're wondering who signed off on those projects. So, how do we ensure, even with this project and other projects, that once it, somebody's signing off on it, it's doing a proper inspection to make sure that all of those things are done?
Yes, ma'am. So, obviously, Clayton County Fire Marshal's Office, we provide those services for the city of Jonesboro, so from the fire and life safety perspective, our team will be handling that. Um, if this follows, and Ben can probably answer this. Typically, with county projects, we enter into an MOU with the cities, um, so that the county inspections department handles all inspections on county facilities, so we can maintain that continuity.
That, that's exactly. That, that's exactly correct. So part of the other, um, part of the onion that we've also opened up as we've gone through the last two years is there was some continuity issues between you got part of, you're inspecting this part, and you're inspecting this part, and you're inspecting this part. And there was never anybody that would pull it, "Did you give approval? Okay, cool. Now we're gonna sign off on that." That was the previous management. Um, I gotta give kudos to Marty Fox, um, because as he's been leading that division, um, that is part of what he's been pulling together, is ensuring all of those agencies are getting in the same room, so that the water authority is signing off from a civil perspective, so that our life safety folks are signing off, so the planning and zoning is signing off. And we have our own inspector in-house in our department, who's also verifying. So if a inspector from Nova comes in and says, "Oh, that looks good enough," Otis comes back and says, "Man, here's the code." You, you gotta get a little bit more in detail, particularly for these county buildings with county funds that are coming from the citizens. We're going to make sure that we are getting the best bang for the buck. Because this building is going to be a signature building. This is going to be a place people are gonna wanna come. Uh, I know there's gonna be a concern from some people whenever you look at the parking deck, which will be our current parking behind this building, and people have to walk around. I walked it today from where you would come out of that parking deck. It is a two and a half minute walk from there to get into the, um, public entrance to the building. Um, there is another, one last thing that I'm gonna just brush over when we talk about the restrooms. Um, all of the commissioners' offices are the same size. They all have the same amenities. So I know that in our current structure, that isn't the case. We are making sure that all, the body all has the same amenities.
Okay. Thank you, but that wasn't my, I was talking about the employees.
I just wanted to issue the word.
I don't want Ms. Rogers or somebody to say, "Hey, that, we waiting in the line to use the restroom." We don't want that.
Understood.
Not me. Thank you, though.
Any other questions?
Well, just something quick. With all the glass, will it be the kind of glass that we can see outside, but the people outside cannot see in? Or is it gonna be the same, I mean, you can see in?
Uh, you can see in. Uh, it is reflected, it is a reflective glass, and I, we can schedule another meeting for me to bring in the materials and you can see. We have, um, samples of the glass in our office. Uh, not all the glass that you see on the exterior you can see in. Uh, the ceilings go all the way to ten feet. There's glass above that, and that glass, uh, you cannot see through at all. The glass that is vision, that you can see through, um, from the inside, you can definitely see the outside. Uh, from the outside, it's a little bit reflective. Um, and this helps us in what Ben was saying. Uh, the light comes in and it reflects out, so not all of the heat goes through. So that helps us in one thing. And then the other is just the visibility that, yes, you don't want to be seen all the time. All of our, uh, windows have window treatments regardless. Um, so I, I'm not exactly sure which ones, okay, so shades.
Any other questions? All right, again, thank you very much. Finance Department update. Ms. Merritt.
Hi, good evening again. Um, I've asked, um, Mac Underwood with Terminus um, to come and give you an update on how he's been assisting us, um, the last couple of months. Terminus is the, um, con, the group that y'all tasked with coming in and helping tr- um, finance during the transition.
Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, first of all, I want to thank, well, my name is Mac Underwood. I'm with Terminus Municipal Advisors. Uh, we're located, um, thirty-three, thirty-three Cumberland Parkway, Parkway up near Cumberland Mall. And we want to thank you all for allowing us to help assist the Finance Department in bringing us on board. So what I'm gonna do today is cover just a general overview of the Finance Department. Um, we're gonna kinda hit some high points and then talk about some next steps. Well, the main thing that we've been working on is, um, Ms. Merritt asked us to focus on the grant accounting. Um, grant accounting has been behind, and it only had one or two people in there at, at one point. We got two people in there, and then a grant manager, and then another person left, so we're back right where we started from. But I think the main thing that we've done is we came in and worked with the department. Uh, we developed what we call a grant tracker report. It's a report that has everything, all of the grants in there, and you can look at it every month, and you can tell whether the monthly financials have been prepared. You can tell whether all of the, uh, reports have been filed with the entities that they need to be filed with on a monthly, quarterly and annual basis. I think that's something that can really help, uh, the Finance Department know where you are with all of the grants. Uh, we also have balanced the HUD grants. Uh, the HUD grants were behind, and Stacy asked us to go in and balance them. We balanced them through June thirtieth, and they are also balanced now, uh, almost up to date. We are reconciling other grants. Every year, uh, you have to have a single audit report. So when the auditors come in, we will produce a C F A schedule to actually show what all of the grant expenditures have been. We've also worked with the department to develop that. The other thing we've been working on is job descriptions for the, uh, CFO and Deputy CFO. Uh, we kinda put those together and have talked with those, talked with both Mr. Sanford and, uh, with Stacy on that. We're looking at the budget for next year. Uh, what we like to do is start a budget process, looking after the first quarter. Uh, so we'll start that process in, kinda in October, from an internal standpoint. And then December and January, start looking to actually get the information out to the departments. The other thing we're doing is really looking at all of the processes and procedures to see where there might be inefficiencies at and things that we might be able to change and improve the operations. Uh, we're not trying to change something just to be changing. If it doesn't make sense to make a modification, we will not recommend making those modifications. Uh, this is a schedule here. Uh, we like to put together when we first go in, a detailed financial history of the organization. And in this case, we went from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one. And you see what your assets were in twenty seventeen. They grew to a hundred and twenty-four million in twenty twenty-one. And the good part about this schedule here is your liabilities hadn't gone up that much. So you got more assets, but then the liabilities only went from nine million to twelve million. This schedule kinda shows your net position. It went from seventy-six point six million to a hundred and twenty-four million dollars. So you've been doing a good job managing, uh, the county's, you know, financials. And I think thi- this also shows that, uh, in a bar graph, when you look at the gold bar, you had a hundred and twenty-five million dollars worth of assets, compared to twenty-two million dollars worth of liability. And again, it shows the hundred and two million dollars net position. And all of this is through twenty twenty-one. I will say that we did not want to present twenty twenty-two, because there are unaudited numbers, and there are a lot of accruals and things that happen at the end of the year. So we'd rather, um, get the audited numbers and put those, add those to these schedules at that time. This is a schedule of your revenues, go- again, going from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one. Revenues went from a hundred and ninety million to two hundred and thirty-five million. And of course, your expenditure is kinda tracked right along. Every year, though, except for twenty twenty-one, you had a sizable surplus. Twenty twenty-one, you almost broke even. So, you know, ninety-one thousand dollars difference, that's, that's not bad at all. Uh, this is also just a bar graph chart of the, the one at the bottom, the growth in fund balance. Again, going from fifty-nine million to a hundred and two million in twenty twenty-one. I think that shows you're doing a good job financially. This is a bar graph of the revenues. And of course, you know, the main two types of revenue that generate most of the money is the property taxes and other taxes, and they've been kinda consistent over the years. Then we look at the expenditures. Uh, the general government and the courts and law enforcement make up the biggest part of the expenditures, uh, along with public safety. Now, when we start looking at things, we really want to look at the operating and capital budgets, and really start looking on a long-term basis. I think a lot of, uh, counties and municipalities really look at just a one-year budget and one-year financial plan. We want to make, see how we're gonna make it through this year. So what we like to do is, we, again, we want to start the budget process with everybody internally looking at things in October. We'll look at detailed revenues. What we gave you today is a summary of major revenue categories. We'll start looking at detailed revenues, line item by line item, for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. We'll do that both on the revenues and the expenses, and kinda be able to project better what the revenue is going to be. All of that's kinda to be able to do a long-term financial plan. We look at an operating budget, affordability, and the capital budget. And we want to look at a plan at least two to three years out. You'll see on the cap, on the capital part, we really want to do a five-year capital improvement plan, so that you know what your, what kind of monies you have to have to expend in the future. Uh, this is a Finance Department organizational chart. And the point in putting that in here is, right now you have, I think Ms. Merritt and Ms. Farmer are doing a good job. But right now, all of your leadership positions are either vacant or in an interim status. So we want to try to get you to a sound footing from that standpoint. And we put that in here so that you can see, see that. Uh, also, the other thing is, most of your people are under the Finance Department, under the CFO of Finance, Deputy CFO of Finance. Uh, that's in the middle of this chart. Uh, the pension manager has a few, and the budget manager has some. But the biggest part of your employees is in one area. Now, when we look at the vacant positions, again, we say you had CFO and a Deputy CFO of Finance and Budget and Special Project. All of them are vacant. We kinda did some job comparisons and salary comparisons. And we proposed a range to look for these, to fill these vacant positions from the CFO of about a hundred and thirty thousand to a hundred and eighty thousand. For the deputies, a hundred thousand to one fifty. And some of the things we'd be looking for them to know and have knowledge of is generally accounting, generally accepted accounting principles, G A S P guidelines, because everything that you do is gonna have to be reported in accordance with those. We did some comparable salaries by county, uh, and we have, you know, a couple here that's over the hundred, well, two over the a hundred and eighty thousand dollar range, two right in the range, and then two that's a little bit lower. I know in one of the, uh, meetings you all, we had, there were some comments of, about a director of finance versus a CFO. Uh, when you think about the finance director, you're just really looking for managing the operation, managing the apartments, and managing the finances. Well, when you look, uh, at a CFO, you're really looking to the long term to try to do a one or two-year budget. You want to develop a five-year capital improvement plan. And we'll just pause right there to kinda say, a five-year capital improvement plan is not hard to put together. When you look at it, you look at your fleet. Let's just say you got a ten million dollar fleet of vehicles. You say, "Well, I'm gonna put a million dollars in it. Every ten years, I'm gonna replace all my vehicles." Only something you have to really include in there and think through is like when you buy large vehicles, like fire trucks, fire engines, they're gonna cost six, seven hundred thousand dollars. So one year, you're gonna have to have in that space where you can go ahead and buy those large vehicles. Um, when we look at, at the larger counties have a CFO, not necessarily a finance director. And the other thing with the CFO, you're looking for that CFO to really try to manage and help other departments throughout the county. For example, you have this infrastructure bill that's really been passed. That CFO really should be looking for how you can get more money from the infrastructure bill to help fund roads and other projects. You're looking for them to do more than just kinda manage your finances. So we would recommend for you all, a CFO, and, I, I mean, you're gonna do all kind of projections with the information that you currently have. We're not making up information. We're looking for trends and analysis in revenues and expenditures. And we may see something that's gonna have to be taken care of two years out. If you do that, then you go ahead and plan and say, "Commissioners, how are we going to fund this project that do two years out?" So that's the difference really in the CFO and the finance director. Most larger organizations like you all have a CFO, not a finance director. So we think we're moving in the right directions. I think the next step would be for you all to kinda consider the salary ranges. Human resources need to review those job descriptions and kinda look at if they think we are in the right range for the salaries. They may have some different information. Then we'd be asking, uh, the commissioners to approve, fill in the positions. And I guess right now, we're really focused on the CFO position and the Deputy CFO of Budgets. Your budget season is going to start January, I mean, December, January, February. And it would be good if you had a Deputy CFO of Finance on board at that time. Again, Ms. Merritt and Ms. Farmer are doing a good job. I think overall, for the county, you want to have a CFO and a good leader in place. Uh, and once you do that, I think you can really move forward better with your finances. Uh, we also put in there some places we thought you ought to advertise. Georgia Society of CPAs, Georgia G F O A, maybe even Alabama Society of CPAs, Alabama's, uh, G F O A Association. So with that, uh, we have talked about this internally, and we wanted to kinda bring that before you, so you can kinda figure out whether we move forward and how do we move forward. So I'll take any questions with that.
All right, any questions?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner.
Uh, would you recommend, uh, CFO and maybe under the CFO, uh, finance director to actually do, you know?
Well, well, you, you got a Deputy CFO of Budget, and you got a fi- Deputy CFO of Finance. Um, again, the Deputy CFO of Finance has a lot of people under that, that department or that division. Uh, I think it's thirty-eight employees under that division. Uh, with the Deputy CFO of Budgets, there's maybe ten or eleven. So the majority of people is in that area. And we can look at whether we need to reorganize that or change that or not, but for right now, you have the need for a CFO and the budget person, so that you can get through that process. I mean, it really take three, four months sometime to fill positions. You gotta get them advertised, you gotta get them in the paper, you gotta get applications back in, then you gotta go through, through the process of interviewing and trying to bring somebody on. So you really may be hard pressed to get somebody here before the end of December. You know, when you think about it, it's a, it's a good, long process.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have a couple. Thank you. All right, thank you for your presentation. The first place I'm gonna start, though, is based upon your recommendations on salaries, if you don't mind. Let's go back there. You have the recommendation there, and then there's another slide. If you could go to the next slide, I think we were looking at others. What did you base this on? I know these are the actual wages, but what was your basis for choosing those particular counties to be able to compare that said wage?
Um, I, be honest, we've worked with Douglas, and we've worked with, uh, Rockdale. We also worked with Macon. Um, DeKalb was one of those close to here. I don't really know what Chatham is, but, uh...
You don't know where Chatham is?
No, I don't.
Chatham would be, um, and that would...
Albany, okay. I know where Albany is. Now, if you say Albany, I know where that is, yeah.
It's where the port is, sir. It's in Chatham County, the largest port other than the airport. It's in, it's Savannah.
Darty County is all.
Well, I've been to Albany State many times, so I know where Albany State is.
So, uh, the reason I'm asking that, as I wanted to have clarity, was you, why did you choose these? So you only chose these, you're telling me based upon, you work with them. So, um, with that being stated, you aren't currently aware, or are you aware of the, um, employees, number of employees within each one of these jurisdictions that you provided?
Uh, yes.
And then their budget size? Could you?
Yes, for example, uh, Rockdale budget is right at a hundred million dollars. Yours is two hundred million. Uh, I'm not sure what the size of the DeKalb is, uh, but Douglas has probably got about eight hundred employees.
Okay.
Rockdale has about a thousand.
Okay, all right. And so we know what they're managing. And then the other thing is, when we're looking at this, everybody's... And so we know what they're managing. And then the other thing is, when we're looking at this, everybody's structure is different. So I know that you provided this information, but there's a lot of information lacking for me. And that is, number one, some of what you provided, the number of employees, and then the budget for each one of those jurisdictions. And then also the structure, because we need to know how many people are actually going to be reporting up through, um, to those individuals I have been reporting in those jurisdictions so that we can really compare. We can't just compare about a county name and then the amount. We have to see more to actually make a comparison. So if you all could supply that information, that would be great, and I'll do whatever research I could find as well.
Yeah, one of the next steps was to review and approve the job description with HR. But we also wanted them to be able to look at the salary ranges and provide any information and input they had. So we have not done that step yet, but that would be the next step, to try and work with your human resources department. First of all, to make sure that the job descriptions are structured properly like they normally would. And then also to kind of add any input they would have on local counties and commissions close to here.
Right. So my, again, my point, though, is you gave us some document, documentation, but there's no basis for that documentation other than you all work with these folks. So that's my concern. I need to get a little bit more info to even make a comparison.
We will pull together a chart on that to kind of show you the difference, differences between each organization and the number of employees and the budget. I mean, we, we have that and we see that, but we just didn't put it in this presentation, but we'll bring it to you.
That would be great. You could just send it as well. Um, and then also, I'm glad that you were able to break down the difference between the finance director versus the CFO. That's something I've been asking. Not necessarily the title. I, I hear your recommendation. Um, and I'm going to do a little, little bit more reading up on that because, basically, we've not had one that's actually certified in public accounting. And, you know, I don't know if people understand the difference between being certified and uncertified. To be a certified public accountant, to even work in the private sector, you have to have so many years under your belt before you can even si- um, be able to get that certification. All right? The same for public, for the public aspect, there are so many years of requirements that are needed in order to get that. So for me, I like that you broke it down, but there's one piece that's missing. And that is that a person that's over a budget of two hundred million dollars, um, they, i- i- if, if the state in the states across the United States requires that, then obviously, we should have a certified public accountant. And I know that's a debate. That's just a philosophy debate. But, um, because of being able to do these types of projections and so forth, it would need to be sound, um, uh, financial, um, projections. And so, a- again, it would need to be a certified public accountant is what I would suggest as my one person, as being one person.
And Commissioner, that's why we put the advertising with the Georgia Society of CPAs and the Alabama Society of CPAs in there. And I think if you have the job description, we also put in there preferred as a CPA. I, I don't know if you have that, but in the job description that we drafted, we have preferred CPA and a certain number of years. So I agree, you would want a CPA. But if you don't find a CPA, they need to be knowledgeable of governmental accounting and fund accounting. Anybody off the street can't do fund accounting. You've got all of the different funds and things to deal with. Some are restricted, some are not. So the key there is having somebody that has that background knowledge, you know, the skills, knowledge, and the background to be able to do that. So a CPA would be preferred. Uh, but if you can't find that, you may find somebody with fifteen, twenty years of experience and still be able to do the job.
Awesome. One last thing I'd like to see from you all is not just the org charts for your comparisons, but a, um, suggestion of what you see would be, allow us to be able to be, um, able to function more efficiently within a different org chart here, because as you pointed out, that there is a heavier load on the operations side. But I know with some directors out there, and I know y'all got to put all that stuff in Muniz's self. So even though you're required to put all that in Muniz', we're heavy on the side where I would think they would be inputting some of that information. And then, but yet, we have a very small, miniscule amount of focus on budgeting, which you know budget is everything. And that's what I, uh, was trying to mention earlier. Uh, when we're approving things, we have to budget it first. It first has to be in the budget. And then we can look at the processing of it. So I'd love to see your suggestions, or just any, whoever you all are sourcing, see their suggestions there.
I, I mean, another thing we look for is during the operations, before an item is approved and goes on the agenda, it should be budgeted.
That's right.
There's a process that you go through to check to make sure that everything that's submitted is already in the budget. If it's not, a budget amendment should come with that item to budget it, and you know where the funds are going to come from. So we, we can take a look at that and try to improve that process also. Um, I, I have a meeting in the morning, and one of those things we're doing is going over items to be on an agenda. We want to make sure it's covered, it's in the budget, and everything is, uh, already there.
I know Madam Vice Chair is going to be happy. She's going to be coming back with all those amendments. And, um, and one final thing, though, I, I'm really looking to see how funds have been moved around because it's been brought to our board on several occasions that where we think, as this board votes, we vote for something to be in a budget. And so therefore, it should be in said subsequent account. And then we're finding out it's not operating that way. So I'm looking forward to, um, the continued work, um, in this space. And I'm really looking forward to us getting that letter off because we did vote. We did vote. Thank you for what you, you're doing. But we did vote to go further, to make it right, to make sure that we're not missing any beats. And we voted to make sure that we brought in an additional firm to finish this auditing process because in order to really deliver service to our community, we got to know where the funding is. We got to know where we are. And so this overview is great, but we, we got to figure it out. So thank you so very much.
All right. Well, thank you all. I, I'll say this. I think the item that Mr. Stanford and, and, uh, Stacey was talking about earlier, they were going to reduce the budget in the general government and move it over into another department. So it's kind of like moving out of one area and putting it in another one. It's there in the budget, but it's moving it from one, one location to the other, so.
I'm glad you said that because we voted for those budgets as they were presented. So if money ain't where it's supposed to be, we shouldn't even have to be doing that. No matter whose department it is, whether it's PD, whether it's fire, if this board votes on funding to go in a certain place, if it's voted on, it should have been there. So I'm glad it's being corrected, but hopefully, moving forward with the reorg of communication directly from the COO, this will put a stop to that moving forward. I hope so.
Okay, thank you.
One thing to add, as you're looking at organizational structures, let's just keep in mind that, and I think you said it earlier, we need the best fit for Clayton County. So let's make sure that we're looking at the effectiveness and pro- productivity of how we operate here.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you. All right, last presentation, grants reorganizational update.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. Um, last Board of Commissioners meeting, there was some discussion around grants, grants management, grant structure, grant organization, grant reporting. You name it, all things grants. We, we, we touched on a little bit of everything. Um, as a result of that, the COO committed to bringing back before the board um, a little bit deeper dive into kind of what our current structure is and then a proposed structure moving forward. Um, so what we've done is we've broken this up into two pieces, um, just given the timeframe to make sure we got information back to the board, um, at this evening's meeting. So what I'm going to present out to you tonight is just kind of a very general overview of where we currently stand with our grants management, where people are, are positioned, and in what divisions they currently reside in. And as we kind of work through this, you'll kind of see a little bit of overlapping in job titles. That doesn't necessarily equate to an overlap in function. Um, but that's one of the things that we're looking at is exactly, um, if you have a grants analyst in three different divisions, are they all doing the same thing? Um, or is it just a, a product of a history of moving folk around in billets without really addressing the billet? So we felt it was important that we start with an overview of where we sit. And then, of course, it is our goal, um, from the COO's, COO's office, to bring you back a comprehensive reorg at the October fourth board meeting for you to consider um, and discuss in further detail. So as we discussed, the purpose of discussion tonight is to, um, outline the current process for grants management, identify the divisions that have grants management component, and then foster a little bit further discussion on the need to centralize the associated functions. So right now, uh, we all know that the grants management process is rather decentralized as it resides in a minimum of three departments, um, within the county. So as we start to kind of look at where the current grant structure, um, resides, we want to point out kind of what the current organizational structure is. And when we look at and we talk about position count for the purpose of this, it does not take into account any directors, um, or any of those. So we're only talking about hands-on, day-to-day employees that are managing grants. So when you look at the Department of Community Development, they currently have eight employees, um, that carry out grants management functions, and they are outlined as you see. Um, the HUD program manager and the HUD Financial Compliance Manager report directly to the Director of Community Development. There's an administrative assistant, um, that provides support to those two, um, individuals. And then you can kind of see how the rest of them are broken out into down payment assistants, a senior compliance officer, senior program specialist, housing inspector, and then a housing coordinator. So the vast majority, obviously, of what community development is dealing with is our HUD program funds, um, and the management of those funds. So as we move over into the finance, um, division, uh, Mr. Underwood just talked a little bit, um, about those positions. So reporting to the, the deputy, a deputy CFO, you have a grants contracts management person, a senior grants analyst, and then a HUD grants analyst, which works directly in concert with the, um, financial compliance, uh, component person over in community development to ensure that the HUD grants are being administered and drawed down appropriately. Um, as we move forward into the structure that currently exists in the Office of Performance Management, there's currently nine personnel that are assigned to managing grant functions. And I've broken them out in two different charts, um, for a very specific reason. And then I've color-coded them so you will kind of understand where the funding for those positions is coming from. And that becomes important as we start to look at the sunset provisions for both the ERA funds and the ARPA funds. So the emergency rental assistance funds will sunset in 2025 to mean we have to have those funds expended by 2025. The ARPA funds, um, have to be allocated by 2024 and expended by 2026. So as you look at the structure, the top part of this structure is the Office of Performance Management structure. It does not currently show the Chief Strategy Officer, which is the only full-time position that resides within that division. You have the Senior Grants Analyst that is ARPA-funded. Um, and when I say full-time, I mean, full-time funded by the board as a position. Um, the Senior Grants Analyst is currently funded by ARPA funds. And then they have two interns that, that work under them that are funded out of the emergency rental assistance funds. So the OPM positions, as you see noted, are grant-funded and will end, um, in 2025 and 2026 respectively unless they are absorbed by the Board of Commissioners. And as I said, the one exception to that is the current Chief Strategy Officer. Um, as we look at the other six individuals that currently carry out grant management functions as a section of the Office of Performance Management, you have the Call Center Supervisor, who is an ACF employee, that's Africa Children's Fund. Um, that position is funded, um, from their administrative service fees. And then you have a total of five case managers that are working within that call center, um, that are funded from the emergency rental assistance funds. And once again, those five are supervised by the Call Center Supervisor. So as we look at the current structure, which obviously we've classified as being very decentralized, we have a total of twenty positions that are spread across three departments. Um, after 2026, there will be eleven remaining barring some action by the board. Um, as I stated, the position count does not include any department directors. Um, and then, of course, we obviously have identified opportunity for increased efficiency in what we will bring back before this board. Moving forward, as we started working through a little bit of this process, we came across, um, a few things that we will also bring back as either a discussion point or a policy decision, um, by the board. As we start to look at all grants approved, um, accepted by the BOC, that's obviously how we function. But there is the caveat that there are grants that are brought forth through the courts and other constitutional officers. Given that they don't necessarily have to come before this body of constitutional officers to seek approval, at some point in time, those funds have to enter the county's coffers, get into the county budget, and then be expended. So we need to kind of clarify what that process is, um, to ensure that we're tracking all grants equally and that we're making sure that the financial reporting is being cleaned up on the backside. When we look at policy needs, we talk through a couple timeline issues with grants. Oftentimes, um, grant funds come in, they're on an extreme, um, tight deadline that may or may not fall within the board meeting schedule. So we need to put in some clear-cut policies on how we handle timeline issues. Um, and just to give you a general conception of what we're talking about, ratification votes where things may be approved to move forward, and then they're brought back before the board, um, to be ratified. And then, of course, we have reoccurring and then statutory grants that most of the time when we submit applications, you'll see, we had this discussion earlier, apply for and accept grant funds. Not all grants require us to apply. Um, so in some cases, we may bring back a grant that's simply accepting the grant funds. Let me give you an example. A lot of our GMA grants or statutory grants, our Emergency Management Assistance Grant that we get for providing emergency management services, that's a grant we know is coming every year. It's the same dollar amount every year unless the state changes it. We don't have to apply for it. It shows up. Um, a lot of times, they don't tell us when it's coming. They show up with a check and say, here's your, your EMPG funds for this year. So we've been handed a grant check that we now have to come back and kind of clean up on the backside with the board. So we want to make sure that there's a formalized policy put in place as a part of the, the larger reorg discussion that, that will come back so that everybody's clear on how we handle those types of grants, um, and those types of processes and procedures. So as we start to look at what a centralized grants management department would look like, we bore it down or broke it down into three major, um, applications. And we will kind of structure the positions that we've talked about into one of these categories. And there's a sourcing application phase, um, that we will look at. There's a programming and compliance phase of the grant. And then, of course, the financial reporting. All of these, um, will be driven by a forward-facing service, um, function or department, so to speak, or division of, of the grants department, um, that deals with both indirect and direct forward-facing services. That would be communication with other county departments as we look into the grants management structure, how to get the applications, notice of grant opportunities, get the notice of funding opportunities and all that out to our internal department. But then, the indirect, dealing with our citizens. Making sure that there's dashboards that kind of show where these grants are, the amount of grants that's coming into the county versus what we've expended and what that ratio is. So that's kind of one of the things that, that, that we've identified to be a lacking component now is ensuring that we're getting all of that information accurately and timely reported. And a lot of that is just simply because it's decentralized across three divisions or three separate departments in the county. So to kind of wrap it all up, um, we, we've kind of laid out in, in a rapid, somewhat fashion for you just to give you an idea of where it lays now. And you can kind of start to see why some of the issues exist that, that we've discussed in previous meetings. So, um, either myself or the COO, um, will, will obviously answer any questions you have. But as I stated, we look to bring a more comprehensive reorganization solution to you, um, at the October four meeting.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Frank.
Thank you again. Thank you, Chief. Go back to your, um, structure on what we currently have in terms of grants, if you don't mind.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we just had a presentation from, regarding the finance department. So my question is, how, I know you said the financial piece, but I'm looking at this org chart and their grants contractor managers and then the seniors, finance, and so forth underneath there. Can you help me kind of overlay these two? Maybe y'all have to get together to do it.
Are you, are you currently looking at community development versus, are you just looking at all three?
No, we're talking about, we just had a finance presentation that talked about grant management and the grant management division. And it was brought before us that we need to have somebody in that space. But looking at that, it doesn't take this into consideration in this particular presentation.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. So what's outlined there represents these three positions and will obviously be folded into the reorganization presentation that we bring back before the board.
Okay, because it looks like there are some duplications according to this.
Well, yes, ma'am. So, and that's one of the things that we identified in talking with, uh, interim CFO Merritt, um, Linda Boswell over in HUD. On paper, it looks like there's some duplication, and it's because of job titles and where people have been placed. But when we started looking at function, we realized that they're actually doing two... But when we started looking at function, we realized that they're actually doing two separate things. So, we don't think that there's a lot of duplication in function, we think it's a job title, it's a classification issue. So, that's, once we started running into that, we realized there's no way that we could bring you accurate, detailed information to tonight's work session. So, we needed to take a pause, step back, because as we look at what you're looking at there versus the discussion we were having with the Boots on the Ground Grants people, we realized that there's an appearance of a duplication, but as far as function, that may not necessarily be the case. So, that's what we're currently digging into now so that when we tell you something, it'll be actual.
Okay, so, there's gonna be follow-up on that?
Yes, ma'am.
And somehow, you all are gonna get together?
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, I think you may have answered that. Under Finance, you have the HUD Grants Analyst, and you also have HUD Grants under Community, the Community Development. The other thing, will you go to another thing here? And I really learned something tonight on this, I think it, yes, right here, on this Office of Management, Performance Management.
Yes, ma'am.
I did not know that we hired, we have a hired person, I guess it's grant whatever, for the Call Center Supervisor, that's African Children's Fund.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that what you said?
Yes, ma'am. So, the Call Center Supervisor is an ACF employee, so that position is paid for out of their administrative fees that they get for managing that grant.
I thought he said he had eight cell phones.
It only shows...
Five lines, and then I guess that would be six? I'm really confused on that.
Maybe he has extra if one goes down. Any other questions?
Would that be a call center? Would that be a call center, though? Where's the call center?
Call centers over, off a government circle, in the old IT building across from building and maintenance.
So, we're supplying them with space in a government circle for the call center?
The call center employees, the case managers are, we're paying them directly through the ERA funds, but the call center manager, yes, that will be an ACF employee.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
We're looking forward to update on this.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I have a question. Did we charge them rent to be in there, or did we pay them to work and they were there for free?
No, ma'am, we didn't charge them rent.
Because Jonesboro was charging us rent to have our people in there working for Fire Department. Okay, I got you.
All right. No other presentations, we stand adjourned. Thank you.